Welcome and good evening to our June 12th regular meeting of the Chandler City Council. Uh, we've got a few things going on tonight, so we'll be gaveling in, gaveling out. As council knows, I'm the gaveling mayor, so this is a delight night for me. So let's call our meeting to order and clerk, please take your role.
Mayor Hartke.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ellis.
Here.
Councilmember Encinas.
Up here.
Councilmember Poston.
Here.
Councilmember Orlando.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Our invocation tonight will be brought forth by Pastor James Hofer from Epiphany Lutheran Church, followed by our pledge of allegiance from councilmember Jennifer Hawkins.
Please rise and pray with me. Dear Father, we thank you for your abundant blessings, especially for this city and each person gathered here this evening. Each person counts, his voice matters, but we desire most of all to hear your voice and to do your will. Thank you for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. You made them your stewards with many opportunities and responsibilities as they seek to make decisions that promote peace and serve the needs of this community. We ask that you would graciously grant them wisdom to understand the conflicting interests and issues, a sense of the welfare and the true needs, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there's honest disagreement. Personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks as they deal with this agenda set before them now. Give each an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work around our beloved city of Chandler. In the name of Jesus, I pray, amen.
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 Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Thank you pastor, thank you councilmember. Council, before we vote on the consent agenda, I do have one speaker card on item number nine, which is the buildings going up on California. Juliette Spence. Hello. Please come up, state your name and address, and you have up to three minutes to share your thoughts, concerns, whatever.
Thank you. Juliette Spence, I'm a Chandler resident and a relatively new Chandler resident. I'm glad I'm here. I say relatively new because I chose as my home Pueblo Viejo. And as the name suggests, it's an old part of town, the oldest. As a result, the lots and the homes there, as we all remember, old homes, all of them were small, very small. I am not questioning that all of the decision makers involved in each of the steps to get item nine, California duplex, here tonight. I am not questioning that any of you or them prior is following the rule of law. What a code says, that is not at issue. And I even understand the reason for the updating of many of the codes, some of which were forced upon you at city level, I know. I want you to know, I've done a lot of work to be able to be here tonight, feeling that I was ready to address this duplex issue. Because I've been on the phone the last couple of weeks with my state legislators. So I had to do some research, how to contact them best, what time they were in, getting through to them to let them know my opinion about middle housing legislation that has passed. Um, I also have been to a public and zoning commission meeting here at Chandler. I have been to prior council meetings just to get a feel for how they operate and how consent item votes are taken. I know that once it gets on a consent item vote, they're all grouped together. And it's because everyone's followed the rule, everyone's had a chance to comment before, it's going to be passed. That is not at issue. I know we need new housing. I know we need to update. That is not at issue. I agree with that. I would just like to bring us back to the fact that I live in Pueblo Viejo. And last night when I went to happy hour, I even passed a brand new mural that said, Pueblo Viejo.
Thank you, Ms. Spence. Ms. Spence, your time's up.
Thank you.
Mayor. Councilmember Orlando.
Ms. Spence, um, I know your time's up and you really didn't get to the point. Can you summarize in one sentence, what's your issue?
We're gonna lose the vibe with gentrification of Pueblo Viejo if we continue to allow two-story or larger duplexes in of all places, Pueblo Viejo.
So I appreciate that. Staff, can we, um, share with Ms. Spence here what your issue is in that particular part of the town that we can and cannot do? And as you alluded to earlier, some of this stuff's out of our hands.
I know, yeah, yep.
But I want at least staff to address that for the public record. Because since you took the time to come up here tonight, I think you deserve an answer as well as the rest of Chandler.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Orlando, we'll certainly have staff reach out and have a conversation.
No, I want, I want a comments now.
Oh.
Yeah, right now. Let's, let's tell this, let's tell her why we're forced to put this piece of property down there.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor will address your question, Councilmember.
Excuse me, someone else is there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening Mayor, Council. Uh, first, I want to applaud the citizen for being so well-educated on the, uh, on the subject. We, that was impressive, I was very impressed. So, um, for tonight's action, uh, the California duplex, uh, this is coming under our current zoning code. Um, and it's a pretty simple request for two small deviations to our code. One is a reduction of a 25-foot front yard setback to a 20-foot setback and a lot coverage increase from 45 maximum to 50% maximum. And that's really it. The, the two-story, the height, um, all the other things about this are consistent with the current code and allowed by rights today. Uh, what the citizen is referring to is the middle housing state bill that the governor signed into law that, uh, the city of Chandler will have to, we would, we are working on a code amendment that we're bringing back to mayor and council, um, that will, uh, basically by right allow one, two, three, and fourplex units within the central business district, it's basically our downtown, and one mile around it. And we'll have a graphic when we bring this forward later this year that shows you the area that this applies to. And it's, it's very clear, this, the, the, it was a good goal, um, in the bill that to clear the way for additional housing to get built quickly. Uh, and, um, but it has some things in there that we can't require setbacks any greater than five feet for the sides and rear. We can't require less than 50% how, uh, lot coverage. We can't limit it to one and two-story homes by right, they'll be able to do three, um, things like that. So, um, the current request is based on our current code, but there is this pending, uh, will be coming forward um, that actually opens it up even more, uh, around the downtown and includes that neighborhood.
Okay, thank you staff, I appreciate it. And thank you for clarifying what we're doing here tonight. And again, um, you know, we're trying to encourage more, uh, for sale homes, uh, particularly in that particular neighborhood and all the neighborhoods in this area. I don't know if this will be for sale, I heard it may be rentals or maybe sold to family members, is that something confirmed?
Yeah, the owner has not determined whether or not they're gonna keep it for their immediate family or, um, put one or both of the units out to rent.
I mean, we need rentals too, but by the same token, these particular areas, I think folks are looking for, um, for sale type of products.
Yep.
Okay. And that seemed to be the market niche that we're, we're, we've had a long discussion about the last year and a half. Um, I know Councilmember Poston has been working on that and our staff's working on a housing plan. So hopefully we come up with some good answers in some areas where we could put this, this new next middle level housing.
You bet.
Thank you, thank you Mayor.
Councilmember Encinas.
Thank you Mayor. Um, Mr. Mayor, can you, um, give me some more information? I, I know you explained the lot coverage and the setbacks and everything. I, I've gotten actually a lot of numerous residents reaching out to me about this before I went to P and Z. And, uh, even this week as we're addressing this, um, case, they started bringing it more to my attention, their concerns with it because there's already a duplex in front of it that, they're basically duplicating the, the exact footprint of it.
Yep.
Their concerns weren't necessarily the, the lot coverage, it's more of the height. So is there anything in our, in that state code that's coming in January that is addressing that height portion? Or is there anything that we can address now with that? Because it's, it's, their concerns are privacy and that it's just overwhelmingly taller than every other house in that neighborhood.
Yeah, you bet. So in the specific example of this house tonight, uh, the duplex tonight, um, it's two stories. Uh, and, uh, the majority of the homes in that neighborhood are single story. Um, the question has been asked, uh, could we, could we shorten it and get it down? Um, there's really three things that, that add up to how tall a, a, a structure is. The first one is where it starts and that's, we call that the finished floor. That is set by grading and drainage and kind of the low outfall runoff, uh, of the neighborhood. It sets a specific height, so that, that can't move where the house starts. Um, each floor has a, has a floor height and it's your floor to ceiling. And when we, you walk into a home, you normally have about an eight-foot clear ceiling. Um, for a two-story, you add these things twice up and then there's a, your roof. Most roofs in that neighborhood are what we call a four and 12, so four inches up for every 12 inches horizontally. Um, and, uh, that could be maybe a three and 12 and brought down. Sometimes you can collapse floors a little bit, but you're really talking about maybe 18 inches of total height reduction and it's not meaningful, um, in that, in this context. That home's height of the concern of visibility is really the second floor windows and there's really not a good way to get second floor windows down lower than what they are. In reference to the house bill, um, that's, that's been sent into law, um, it actually preempts the city from, uh, putting caps to it. The current MF2, I believe, zoning that is, is over this property actually allows it to 45 foot in height. Um, and it has lot coverages and things like that. But, um, the house bill is clear that it, it preempts cities from being able to impose limits, say two stories or lower on this, on this housing product for ones, twos, threes, and fourplexes. So, uh, it doesn't, we won't be able to, when we bring this link, this, uh, code amendment back, uh, before council at the end of the year, uh, we won't have in it, uh, height limitations that are any more egregious than what the current zoning allows. We won't be able to take it down.
Okay, and just to clarify, you said our current zoning is 45?
The, the subject site, its underlying, uh, zoning allows up to 45 feet in height. That's obviously not realistic on a single-family lot like it is. Um, but if someone accumulated, say, six, eight, 10 of those lots and wanted to go up with a, with a multi-family development, uh, by right, they could.
Okay, and this specific, um, project, what, do you know the height off the top of your head?
Somewhere in the mid twenties, um, I don't have that off the top of my head, but it's two stories.
Sorry, I was trying to pull it up. So there isn't anything right now, let me see, height, oh, it's at 28, 28 and a half, um, feet tall.
Yeah, upper twenties.
You said the only reduction that would be possible is about 18 inches?
If you shaved, if you shaved a little bit out of the, you brought the ceilings down for each floor and then you took the roof pitch and, and lessened the slope. But it isn't actually gonna really lower the second floor windows, which is the, the true concern about most building height is the visibility from second floor to people's backyards. You won't be able to lower that any measurable amount to make a difference in visibility.
Okay. And then our, is our, uh, community input in here?
It is, in the public neighborhood notification in the memo.
Oh, here's the letters of opposition, okay.
So council, we're pretty close to if either moving on this or moving this to an action item. Uh, city attorney, give me your thoughts on that. Usually we have a single consent that we vote and don't pull items out to talk. So, um, if there's a lot, if there's further conversation, I, I think we should move this to action rather than, uh, continue this.
I agree, Mayor.
Okay. I, so I heard Vice Mayor, but I'm just, if there's further conversation, let's just make a motion to address this separately, but Vice Mayor?
Yes, I, I did have a question because when, when this was presented to me, I did ask Ken, in architectures, we kind of work it out where the privacy issue could be addressed, uh, where there would not be any window looking into people's backyards. So I didn't know whether the applicant had taken these things into account because I had sent that message.
All right.
Um, well, Mayor. I'm, I'm just gonna ask that we move it to an action item and, and.
So we have a motion to move this to action, is there a second? Second, uh, by Councilmember Poston, all in favor, say aye.
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 Great.
Aye.
Let's do that and then keep, uh, true with this stuff. And before we vote on our consent agenda, we do have, uh, some members of the Citizen Charter Review Committee here. In the audience, if you are on our committee, if you'd please stand, we'd like to recognize you. All right, Jennifer Pollak, Terry Laug.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Uh, at this time, council, I'd entertain a motion for our consent agenda.
Mayor.
Councilmember Orlando.
I move that we approve the consent agenda of June 12th, 2025, regular meeting, items one through 29, with noted number nine was already put on action.
All right, nine's been pulled for action, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Harris. Council, please vote. Is there any recusals? Let me go there, seeing none, okay, council, please vote.
Vice Mayor Ellis.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, let's further the conversation on item number nine, Councilmember Ellis, Harris, I'm sorry.
Mayor, I just wanna make a motion to table the item for 30 days. I do have more questions than what I think is gonna be able to, that we'll be able to go for. So I'm just asking for a 30-day containment so we can pick it back up and so that way I can get all my questions answered. So I'm making a motion to table the item for 30 days. That's my motion.
So.
My motion is to table the item for 30 days.
And Mayor.
Just looking at our calendar, but city man, city attorney.
I was gonna say, if you could make a motion to a date certain, our next council meeting, um, that way we don't have to republish everything.
You want me to include the next council meeting, um, in that motion?
Fourteenth.
The fourteenth?
Well, the way would be.
It would actually be.
The, the two possibilities would either be June 26th or July 17th.
Oh, yeah. July 17th.
Okay. All right, there is a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Uh, seeing no other voices, um, council, please vote.
Vice Mayor Ellis.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Takes that one out, our consent agenda. Next on our agenda is a public hearing. This is on the adoption of the FY 2025-26 annual budget and the 2026-2035 capital improvement program, CIP, and setting the FY 25-26 property tax levies. Uh, Sylvia Delap is here to, um, give us a staff presentation, consider this public hearing open.
Give me one second. I think I need to help on this. There he is, pardon me. Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. Tonight's public hearing will cover the 25-26 proposed budget, the 26 to 2035 capital improvement program, and the 25-26 property tax levy. The fiscal year 25-26 proposed budget totals $1.6 billion, and that includes all funds. The general fund portion totals $615 million. When compared to the prior year, this represents a 0.01% decrease for the total budget and a 6.6% increase to the general fund. This year's, um, theme for the budget is strength in numbers. And this phrase represents Chandler, Chandler's commitment to follow established financial practices and also to collaborate with all the stakeholders. The proposed budget adheres to the city's financial policies and is also structurally balanced so that all ongoing expenditures are covered with ongoing revenues and all the one-time expenditures are supported by one-time revenues. We use the council strategic framework to guide all the decisions. And this budget provides for cost-effective, quality services and maintains long-term financial sustainability. Opportunities for resident input and feedback were provided throughout the process. At the kickoff, at the resident, or with the resident budget survey, at the three-budget workshops, at the all-day budget briefing, during the tentative adoption, and tonight. This slide displays the operating budget highlights. The city of Chandler continues to maintain the lowest transaction privilege tax in the state of Arizona at 1.5%. The primary property tax rate was reduced through the direction of mayor and council for the 10th consecutive year. This budget adds funding for labor association commitments in general, employee merit, and market. And this will allow us to stay competitive with other valley cities and also to continue to attract strong candidates. The budget also maintains the full funding status of the PS PRS obligation and maintains strong reserves. The water, wastewater, and solid waste rate changes are planned for the new fiscal year and this body of work will begin in July. This slide is a recap of the total annual proposed budget, including all the funds. It breaks out where the money comes from and where the money goes. On where the money come, comes from, the sources include local taxes and license fees, utility charges, property tax, bonds, other charges for services, system development fees, grants, and state shared revenues. Additionally, there is fund balance, which, um, this is, um, where we recognize prior year revenues that are not spent. Or that haven't been spent, excuse me. On where the money goes, the uses include department operating budget, the major capital budget, including new and carry-forward projects, debt service, contingency reserves, and vehicle, equipment, and technology replacement. Moving on to the CIP, Chandler's city code requires that we adopt or that we develop a five-year CIP budget. However, our practice is to develop a 10-year budget to, um, have a better long-term plan. The fiscal year 26 to 2035 CIP budget totals $2.6 billion and this represents an increase of $129 million in comparison to the prior year. The CIP was updated to reflect additional utility projects and updated to, uh, include cost estimates that are in line with today's construction environment. The CIP continues to have an increased focus on aging infrastructure for the city and includes projects utilizing potential new bond authorization in years three to 10. Mayor and council authorized a bond election for November of 2025 that will allow for capital projects to continue. The last part of this public hearing will cover the property tax levy. Chandler's portion of the residence property tax bill is 11 cents on every dollar. The remaining portions are dedicated to public schools and community college districts, as well as Maricopa County and special districts. The fiscal year 25-26 property tax levy totals $44.6 million and it is based on an updated limited property valuation of $4.12 billion. This represents an increase of 0.4% in comparison to last year and the increase is made up of 1.3% new property addition and a drop in property appreciation. This drop is related to the implementation of new legislation that changes how personal property is valued, and this is the adjustment year. The total levy increase is $142,000 and it's mostly associated to the secondary property tax rate that pays for the debt service of our bonds. The combined property tax, um, rate reduction is from $1.0826 to $1.0818 per $100 of assessed valuation. As I mentioned before, the primary property tax rate has been reduced through the direction of mayor and council for the 10th consecutive year. So what is the impact of the city tax rate reduction on a medium-value homeowner? In fiscal year 24-25, the medium-value homeowner paid $264.88, in 38 cents as a city's portion of their property tax bill. In fiscal year 26, they will pay $277.40 and that represents an annual increase of $13.01 or $1.08 per month. As far as key budget dates, tonight is the budget public hearing and final adoption. And the adoption of tax levies is scheduled for June 26th. For your consideration at tonight's special meeting is resolution number 5906 that adopts the fiscal year 59, 2025-26 annual budget, sets the annual amounts supposed to be raised by direct property taxation, and adopts the 26 to 2035 CIP. The tentative and final adoption of ordinance number 5130, setting property tax levies, is scheduled for June 26th. This slide displays our phone number and our website in case the public has any questions or requires additional information. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you Sylvia.
You're welcome.
I know that, uh, if you could go back to the slide of, uh, just the breakdown of the, of the tax dollars and Chandler and the other two that were, that were shown, can you grab that back for us?
This way.
All right, I'm looking at broadcasting, oh, there we go. Did, were there any other changes between, um, Maricopa County and the public schools from previous years? Or was this consistent as well? The, the two to the, to the left on this, do we know anything about them or, and are these the final, are, that we know of?
And, okay.
John.
Yes, uh, Mayor, I can certainly address that. This is really just the change at this point for us. Um, we do not have all the numbers for the changes with school districts in the county as of yet.
Okay, and when, when do we usually find that out?
Um, that is a great question, um.
It's not that great.
I'm trying to punt here, I, I, you know, honestly, I'm gonna have to get back to you on that, I don't recall the date.
Okay.
Okay, I will get back to you.
And is it, it's by the end of this month though, right? But within the next couple of weeks?
We should have it by the end of this month, yes, but.
Right, yeah, if you can, if you can let us know if there's been any deltas with the other two, I'd be.
We can do that.
I'd be curious to see, I know we work hard to keep this stable with our rates, but obviously things fluctuate with, uh, the values, but I am curious what's going on in the other circles. I am curious what's going on in the other circles that also affect people's property taxes, so.
Certainly, Mayor. We'll get that information out.
Okay, council, any, um, additional questions for Sylvia related to this?
She did a great job.
She did, didn't she? All right, don't leave yet. Is there any questions, discussion from the audience related to this? All right, seeing none, now you can go. Like to close our public hearing. Before we adjourn, we do have one card on unscheduled public appearances, and that would be Mr. Beal. Please state your name and address. You have up to three minutes. We, as unscheduled, we cannot engage with you, but council listens, asks us to stop.
Good evening, my name is Brooke Beal. Uh, my address is 85 West Tequid Place. I think I'll, I'll cut you guys a break tonight. Uh, I was gonna go off on a pretty deep tangent. And I'm just gonna ask for some information. What I would like is to have either the police department or the city attorney provide me with all of the lawful and unlawful operation of e-bikes within the boundaries of the city of Chandler and property that is owned by the city of Chandler. So in other words, uh, what is allowed on sidewalks? What is allowed in crosswalks, streets, parks, trails, public spaces? Is there a speed limit for riding on a, on a sidewalk? Can you go 65 miles an hour? Uh, is it, are you limited to what the speed limit of the street is? Are you limited to 15 miles an hour, 5 miles an hour? Is it a reasonable speed? I would like to know what the details are for an e-bike, top to bottom. So the, there is no misunderstanding, because I don't believe at this point anyone here in this, in this, uh, audience here or, or the council could accurately tell what the laws are regarding e-bikes. And I think that would be a good place to start. So we would know, yeah, you can ride your, you can ride your e-bike on a sidewalk, uh, you can ride it in the crosswalk, you can go either, any direction you want to. All those, I think, need to be fleshed out. We need to know what is and is not lawful, uh, here in the city of Chandler. Okay, thank you.
All right, with that, I'm gonna adjourn our regular meeting, and then we will gavel into a special meeting. This is for video purposes. Welcome to the special meeting, budget adoption. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mayor Hartke.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ellis.
Here.
Councilmember Encinas.
Here.
Councilmember Poston.
Here.
Councilman, Councilmember Orlando.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. And, uh, city attorney, correct me if I'm right, by state statute, we have to have a special meeting to adopt budgets. That's why we did not do it in the other. I'm seeing positive head nods. So council, we've got one action item on our agenda, which is resolution number 5906, adoption of the annual budget, uh, setting forth the receipts and expenditures and amounts proposed to be raised by direct property taxation for various purposes of the fiscal year 25-26 and adopting the 26-35 Capital Improvement Program in the amount of $2,617,730,721, and maybe a penny or two.
Motion.
So.
So, so move.
We have a motion by Councilmember Harris.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Poston. Seeing nothing else, council, please vote.
Vice Mayor Ellis?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great. Next on our agenda is current events. I'll start. This Saturday is going to be a fun day. We're calling it Triple Play Day, or as Linda Ruiz calls it, Triple Ripple Day. I don't know, but I'm hoping that means there's gonna be ripple ice cream there, I guess. We'll see. So we have a trifecta of fun coming up this Saturday with the Triple Play Day ribbon cutting. We'll start off the day at Orange Tree Park to open the city's 70th park. Then we'll head to Brooks Crossing to celebrate park renovations and end up with Gazelle Meadows. Gazelle Meadows is a park that we put a, a pretty exhaustive, uh, rework having to do with drainage and everything else, and it's been a, a very large project. So whether you can attend one, two, or three, or make it a triple play, you should come and join us on Saturday starting at 8:00 AM. Secondly, I'd like to talk about the summer reading challenge. I took out my card today with Maricopa Reads, and I've already started getting my minutes on there. If you're looking for something fun to do indoors this weekend, our community service team has you covered. The summer reading challenge is underway, and it runs through August 1st. As readers log in their minutes, they'll earn fantastic prizes tailored to their age group. I did have the pleasure of joining several summer storytimes at all four libraries within the last week, and it's been a wonderful way to connect with kids and share the joy of reading. It's not too late to sign up for the challenge. You can head to ChandlerLibrary.org to learn more. Next, I'd like to briefly just mention for our audience, those watching, that our overnight heat relief is beginning tomorrow. As we, as you can tell by the thermometers rising, intense heat is already here. And so we're offering an overnight stay at the Senior Center and the Chandler Senior Center close to here from June 13th into September. Ascend is going to be operating this. The brief news is if you are looking to spend the night either because you are out on the streets and not eligible or involved in some other programs, or perhaps you're concerned about your AC unit running efficiency or the cost, you're welcome to show up at Ascend at 5:30 PM. They will then bus people to the Senior Center. They can spend the night, uh, there'll be food provided, snacks, and then early in the morning, returned back to Ascend. So for more information, check out ChandlerAZ.gov/HeatRelief. And finally, I, we celebrated a huge milestone, milestone as a region last week. The I-10 Broadway Curve Project is finally finished. That is certainly a, a big event to all of us from the East Valley, have been stuck on that curve for more than just minutes. And this is the completion of the largest urban freeway reconstruction project in our state's history. So thanks in part to the support for Prop 400, funding, approval of Maricopa County voters. We've been able to expand capacity, improve safety, and reduce congestion along the vital corridors. And if you're wondering on those, uh, on those pedestrian overpasses on I-10, those are supposed to be representative of, uh, choya cactus fruit. So those kind of fun little things that are sticking out over the bridges, those represent cactus fruit. And I want to thank all of our residents for your cooperation, understanding, and patience for the last many years in the construction phase. This significant regional improvement would not have been possible without your patience, and to allow now for a safer, smoother traffic is a shared achievement that benefits us all. Councilmember Encinas.
Awesome, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say Happy Pride Month to everybody. Uh, I began celebrating, uh, Pride Month on the global level per se uh, with an invite to World Pride in Washington DC this past weekend. Um, it was a memorable, memorable event that, um, only takes place here in the United States every so often. And I got to walk along the parade route with the Victory Institute and got a special invite to attend a reception at the home of the Ambassador of Ireland, um, which was great. Um, I did let her know about our sister-city connection that we have there. Um, so it was a great time there and, uh, good time networking. So I'm bringing all the fun here to Chandler tomorrow, actually. Uh, well, I'll be hosting, we as council will be hosting the annual pride flag raising in Dr. A.J. Chandler Park to mark this occasion. Uh, the community is invited to rejoin us for a brief program followed by, uh, the flag raising and a celebratory reception at Mingle and Gray's. If you guys can join us, it starts at 6:00 PM in Dr. A.J. Chandler Park. It'll be a program probably about 25 minutes because the heat is coming in, and then we can take, uh, refuge inside Mingle and Gray's. So I look forward to celebrating with Chandler, um, as a welcoming city for all, and look forward to celebrating with our community. So we'll see you guys there. Thank you.
Councilmember Poston.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, last week, I got the opportunity, along with the rest of city council, to attend the Chandler Chambers Community Awards. And this is one of their two big signature events. I think I've been going for probably 15 years, and most of council goes it as well. And it's the Chambers Opportunity, and it's nominated by the community, individuals and businesses that are an amazing part of the success of Chandler. There's a portion for schools, and it's always a great event. They, they do a great job. They make it very fun. But one thing I did want to note as well is that there's always also a Snedeker Award, and they recognize a Chandler officer. And Officer Coronado was recognized that night. I actually ran into Assistant Chief Perez in the hallway on the way out. We were talking about him, and he couldn't stop talking about how amazing Officer Coronado was. And apparently he was just unanimously voted, um, and deserved this award, so I also wanted to give a shout out to him as well. Thanks, Mayor.
And the city award, too.
Well, you know, we all, I thought you might want to mention the mayor's award, too.
Well, it's technically the city awards, so, but that went out to, uh, Mesa Rich, or AKA Chandler Fashion Center, for the, the great work that they have done in terms of reinventing this shopping experience, so. Councilmember Orlando.
Other than Happy Father's Day to all those, uh, fathers out there, nothing else.
Councilmember Harris.
All right, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Have a few Juneteenth announcements coming up. I was taking a couple of few notes. But the first, uh, the first one is probably the strongest one. I'm not judging, but Culture Music in a Park is happening again this Saturday. This was initiative that I started, and it was absolutely amazing. The first time we did it, we went out there, record-breaking numbers, and we were dancing up a storm. And I can be honest, like, uh, I appreciate everyone, and I'm not gonna be remiss because, uh, Pastor Hardy was out there, and we was getting there, and as soon as the temptations came on, Pastor Hardy got out of his seat and he got to going. And we, we, uh, temptationed it all the way through and through. So it was a really fun, um, time. But make sure you guys come this Saturday from, um, 7:00 to 9:30. You're gonna have a good time, so bring your lawn chairs, bring your rags, so you can wipe your forehead. I promise, I'm gonna be on the dance floor the whole entire time. And Vaughn Willis from Ear Candy, he's gonna be performing. As you know, he's amazing. And he has some special surprises that you guys can definitely be a part of. They're gonna be doing some line dancing and teaching you, too. So if you don't know how to dance, don't worry about it. We got you. But it's just gonna be a good time for everyone to celebrate each other, and let's just celebrate music. That's the thing that makes us come together. It's music. So let's just do that together, and let's make, um, this amazing event happen this Saturday. And Mayor, I'm gonna see you on the dance floor, am I? I'm gonna see you there?
I'll be there at 7 o'clock.
He's gonna be dancing. He got a little dance move that he does, but we won't ruin the surprise. So come and see what we have going on. Also, uh, we have Miss Juneteenth. That's gonna be happening this Friday at 6:30, uh, at the Chandler Center of the Arts. The program, the doors open up at 6:30. The program is gonna start right about 7 o'clock. And from what I know, that there's gonna be some council members there, and the mayor's gonna be having some remarks on that Friday as well, and it's gonna be open to the public. I know they're gonna have some vendors, so go there, support, uh, some small business owners as well. It's gonna be amazing time. And lastly, don't forget this Friday, there's gonna be, I mean, this Sunday, there's gonna be the Juneteenth Father's Day Mixer uh, at the Little Panda, Singing Panda. They're gonna be there, uh, to do a Father's Day Mixer. Other than that, I wanna send a special Happy Father's to the mayor, to Matt, uh, to, uh, Jason's dang husband, to your husband. Wes, send a special Happy Father's Day to Wes, and to all the amazing fathers that's out there. Josh, Happy Father's Day. Tad, Happy Father's Day. Shaq Matt, should I go down the list? I'm, I'm gonna miss somebody. Don, your husband. Oh, Andy, oh my God, Andy, of course. Oh, I'm gonna miss somebody. I better stop while I'm ahead.
You're already behind.
Happy Father's Day to everyone. I hope that you got, I see something in the back, too. I'm not even gonna go there. Okay, I'm, I'm done. I'm done. Happy Father's Day. You guys have an amazing time, and, and thank you guys so much.
And not to mention the fact that there's also the Miss Juneteenth pageant going on Friday night, too.
Yes, the, yes, Miss Juneteenth pageant at the Chandler Center of the Arts at 6:30. So, all right, thank you, Mayor.
Jennifer Hawkins.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'm gonna have to request a new seat after this. I'm always the last in having to, you know, do pickup.
I feel your pain, Councilmember.
All right.
It was their last year.
So I get the pleasure of talking about our parks. We have the Triple Play Day this weekend, which they already talked about. And the next thing is, is for our Parks Day, which is the following weekend. June is, um, Park and Recreation Month, and to keep the celebrations going, we're inviting the community to join us next Saturday, June 21st, from 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM, to restore two athletic fields at Snedeker Sports Plex to prepare them for the upcoming sports season. So it's a great way to volunteer, um, grab the families, service clubs, scouting groups, or anyone looking to get outside and some extra sunshine. So if you want to join us, you can find the link to RCP on our website. Well, come out, help us keep Chandler beautiful. We would absolutely love to see you there. And Happy Father's Day to all of the fathers out there. So, thank you.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, all of the, uh, events that were mentioned tonight would not be possible without something that went pretty quickly on tonight's agenda, which is adoption of the annual budget. And I just want to say thank you to all of you for approving the budget, as well as to our staff for all the hard work they put into preparing it this year. It's always refreshing to look around at some of our fellow cities around the valley and see some of the challenging times they may be having, or some of the disagreements about how to spend limited resources. And here we get to not only talk about how we're being as efficient as possible with our tax dollar for our residents, but also continue to provide a very high level of service and reinvest in our community. So I want to thank you for approving the budget and making it one of the smoothest processes I can remember in my eight years with the city. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. That concludes our meeting.
Thank you.